A public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on January 17th, 2025 to the home news Tribune of Star Ledger and the clerk and the clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Baker Street in New Jersey. Item number one, roll call please.
Ms. Caldwell?
Here.
Ms. Jackwest?
Here.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Mrs. Seawood? Mr. Spencer?
Here.
Ms. Verella?
Here.
Mr. Adorno?
Here.
Ms. Sevilla?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Flaxham? Reminder that the preliminary budget meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, beginning at 6:00 PM here at the New Brunswick High School here in the auditorium. The public hearing on the budget presentation will be held on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, beginning at 7:00 PM during the regular board meeting of education, regular Board of Education meeting at New here at New Brunswick High School here in the auditorium. Moving to item number three, presentations. Turn to Mrs. Lago's heel.
If all of our board members could have a seat in the audience and join the audience so we can enjoy these two presentations. Good evening and welcome. Today we have two presentations for you. The first one is titled Hands to the Rescue CPR A Simple. February is Heart Month, and we are excited to share an important message about heart health and life-saving awareness. Heart disease remains a serious concern, but there are many ways we can protect ourselves and support others. Tonight, six grade students from New Brunswick Middle School are here to raise awareness about heart disease and provide vital information on cardiac arrest, heart attacks, and life-saving skills that can make a difference in emergencies. We hope you leave here with new knowledge and feel empowered to take action for a healthier heart and a stronger community. Come on, New Brunswick Public School, New Brunswick Middle School.
Good evening and thank you for welcoming all of us to this board meeting, to this very important learning experience in which we have been participating at New Brunswick Middle School within our physical education and health classes. I'm Adam. That he's John. She's Kristen. It's this one. We are all here to demonstrate a life-saving skill that everyone should learn and that can save lives. The purpose of this presentation is (1) Shared information surrounding cardiac arrest, heart attacks, and life-saving skills that can prevent deaths in these emergency situations. (2) Create awareness of heart health. (3) Debunk misconceptions and myths involving cardiac arrest and heart attacks. (4) Demonstrate and teach the skills necessary to perform hands-only CPR. And (5) Apply the hands-only CPR skills that we have learned in a real-life scenario acted out by us. Now we're going to be playing a game of myth and fact. If you think it's a fact, raise your hand. If it's a myth, keep it down. Cardiac arrest and a heart attack are the same thing. If you think it's a myth, raise your hand. It is a myth. In cardiac arrest, the heart suddenly stops beating typically between electrical problems, whereas in a heart attack, blood can't get to the front of the heart because a key blood vessel is blocked. When a person is having a heart attack, the symptoms always appear suddenly. It is a myth. Sometimes, symptoms can start slowly and last for hours or days. Heart attack symptoms happen the same to everyone and are very obvious. It is a myth. In women, people with diabetes and older adults, symptoms may not be obvious and might not include chest pain. Each year, over 250,000 people suffer a hospital cardiac arrest. It is a fact. Only 10% of those people have hospital cardiac arrest survived. It is a fact. Hands-only CPR has been shown to be as effective as conventional CPR for cardiac arrest animals, at work, or in public. It is a fact.
So today we are going-
If you see a teen or adult suddenly collapse, it is important-
So today we are going to show you a video of how to do CPR hands-on.
If you see a teen or adult suddenly collapse, it is important to act fast. Helping to save a life is easier than you might think. Just start hands-only CPR. The first step is to ask someone to call 911 and to give an AED, or call 911 yourself and put your phone on speaker mode so the operator can assist you. Then get directly over the victim. Put the heel of one hand in the center of the chest and put your other hand on top of the first. Then push hard and fast in the center of the chest until help arrives. It's important to push, giving 100 to 120 compressions per minute, which is about the same tempo as the song "Stayin' Alive", or the rate of music you're listening to right now. Let's hope you never have to use hands-only CPR. But know that CPR combined with using an AED provides the best chance of saving a life. Impossible using AED every time you provide CPR. Again, if you see a teen or adult suddenly collapse, don't be afraid to start hands-only CPR. Remember, call 911 and ask someone to give an AED. Then push hard and fast in the center of the chest until the AED and help arrives. Your actions can help save a life. If you see a teen or adult suddenly collapse-
"Stayin' Alive" by La Vichy's is a good example of a song you sing inside your head that has the right tempo for CPR watches, 100 to 120 compressions beats per minute. Oh my God, someone, please help these two, they're having cardiac arrest.
Oh no! They also have no legs.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for us tonight? Any questions, hopefully we can answer? Guys got anything for us? Yes, please.
So before you were asked to do breathing and compression.
Yes.
Well, I'm kind of curious though, if without some breathing, some oxygen test, these are very well oxygenated breathing, and to keep the person really keep them alive.
Correct. Yeah, so we know that majority of the time they take out the breathing, right? But we do have the compressions. We hope to get some sort of circulation back, get the heart pumping again. And once that heart gets pumping again, that's when oxygen will return back to the brain and hopefully will leave us enough time while doing that for somebody, an EMT or some sort of emergency, to come through and kind of get us back to formality here. So it's really, we take the breaths away, but the compressions will hopefully keep that person alive long enough for that emergency to come and take care of the rest of the situation. So we hope that the compressions will open up those airways, get the blood flowing again, hopefully put a little bit of oxygen back into their brain if they lost a lot of it, just enough time for that emergency, or so you're still want to come in and pick that person up.
Thank you. And now for our second performance centered on Black History Month. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the achievements, contributions, resilience, and lived experiences of the Black diaspora in America. Black history is not just a month of celebration, but an ever-evolving experience that cannot be defined by a single story. Blackness is rooted in many stories told by many different voices. James Weldon Johnson, composer of what is known as the Black National Anthem, "Lift Every Voice and Sing", emphasized the power of every voice. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of hope that the present has brought us. Tonight, we will explore a rising bouquet of voices that have bloomed in the face of adversity and insurmountable challenges. Ladies and gentlemen, we invite you to lift your voice with hope for our community, our state, our country, and our world. In tonight's program, we are featuring the New Brunswick High School Choir, conducted by Adam Kerskowitz, performing their edition of "Lift Every Voice and Sing". They will be followed by instrumental performance of the Old West Trilogy by our Paul Robeson Orchestra, conducted by Christopher Johnson. Next, selected students from P-Tech's freshman class will highlight accomplishments of Black innovators in STEM. Following that, one of our New Brunswick High School juniors will deliver a spoken word performance. And the evening will conclude with a speech from Thurgood Marshall's, presented by two of our P-Tech seniors. Now, please rise for the Black National Anthem, "Lift Every Voice and Sing".
(Singing) Let every voice sing till the heavens ring, bring with the harmonies of lathered tea. Let our rejoicing rise high as the lifting sky. Let every sound loud as the rolling seas. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun, the march of day begun. Let us march on to victory and won. Let us march on to victory and won.
Good evening, board members, parents, faculty, and staff. We are here representing our school, P-Tech. We are here to link to all the Black African-American mathematicians, inventors, and engineers who left a permanent mark on the world and helped change and create the world into a better place. I would like to begin with Catherine Johnson, a NASA mathematician, aerospace engineer. In her 36 years of working with NASA and its predecessors, she earned a reputation for mastering complex manual calculations and helped pioneer the use of computers to perform tasks. She once said, "We will always have STEM with us. Something will drop out of the public eye and will go away, but there will always be science, engineering, and technology, and there will always, always be mathematicians." We at P-Tech are inspired to follow in her footsteps.
Elijah McCoy, a Canadian-American engineer, African-American, and said, "Knew from an early age his passion was engineering." He once said, "Dreaming impossible because dreams do come true." Later in his life, he went on to be a successful African-American inventor and engineer who overcame racism and did what those who were against him thought was impossible for him to do.
George Washington Carver, who was born in St. Louis, defined the arts and became an hydrochemical chemist. He started to lift black farmers through the development of new products derived from peanuts, sweet potatoes, and soybeans. His story taught the world that no matter how hard the times, you can achieve your goals in life. George Washington Carver, amazing story, helps you reflect on what are you able to accomplish in life. When reading his words, you feel a certain way and you reflect on your journey while achieving your dreams. He once said, "99% of failures come from people who have the habit of making excuses." So stop making excuses and make that effort.
We have cataracts, and you can see here Patricia Baffet. Patricia Baffet is an American ophthalmologist and humanitarian. She was the creator of a unique laser eye technique to remove cataracts in the eyes. She had a love for science ever since she was a child. She once said, "It did not allow your mind to be imprisoned by the majority thinking. Remember that the limits of science are not the limits of imagination." She was once pushed past the limits set before her. She even became the first woman to join the Jewel Steve Eye Institute. Remember that these inventors are more than just intelligent. They were dreamers who never gave up, facing challenges but pushing forward. Didn't let their race gender or anything that others deemed as a weakness stop them from showing their strengths. Their stories remind us to persevere, stay strong, and to never let anything hold us back.
Good evening, my name is Evelyn Gonzalez. I am a junior at New Brunswick High School. This Black History Month, we want to lift every voice. The Black experience is not a monolith, but a rich and diverse experience with many layers. Afro-Latinos have also made a significant impact in American society and the world. The acknowledgement of Afro-Latinos celebrates the nuances of Black identity as a complex intersection of lived experiences that deserve visibility and validation. This is "Afro Latina" by Melania Luisa Marfe. Latina, an adjective that we choose to be seen. Afro Latina, eme, la fauto. A thing she becomes after the third party leaves, lest she hadn't been standing there all along. Clearing the forest while grinding her bones through the fertilized soil. This isn't a metaphor for Black girl magic or anger. This is me no longer flat ironing my hair, my fro to fit within the margins of a term. Dependent on my proximity to whiteness, I am not Black in Latina. I am a Black Latina. I'm a unique stranger's whisper about this belief. Confident, my tongue don't congregate like theirs. I am creating my own narrative before they write me out the wrong story. Conter my surviving into their savior. They only are shrines to die on, and how will we always bend damaged goods? Sold at a bargain price, their cotton copias, they snap their fingers and blow us into dust. Her silhouette, the standard. Her Afro, a wit they take on and off. Her melanin package and soda leisure. Her culture, a billion-dollar commodity. Merengue, bachata, salsa, rumba, tango, samba. Name a beat, her head's aim on and move into baile, into ritmo, into música. When Celia says, "La negra viene tumbao", she's speaking for millions of Afro-Latinas who go missing in history books, and movies, and television, and conversations about their own identities. In real life, Afro-Latinas, Black women, poor women, marginalized women are dying, are targets, and those who love her culture won't attend her funeral, will not speak of her life. Instead, tape up her house, ready to thrift and shop her culture away. Buy up earlums and call them spicy. Bloody red with passion. Do you see it? How easily Black girl becomes wallpaper to the building of her own identity. A mime always in front of her to edifice a movement. My culture is not your cash cow. My mother's country is not your paradise. My bilingual tongue is not your inquisition to crusade over. Dicen que soy Latina, until I start talking about colorism, until I check them on air ashore, until I- ashore, until I choose to speak on my own behalf, until I remind them my Afro comes before Latina. Thank you.
Given along with tonight's theme of lifting every voice, tonight, we want to remind you that you too have a voice. You have a voice to stop injustice when you see it, to call out discrimination and racism.
On July 4th of nineteen ninety-two, Supreme Court Judge Thurgood Marshall addressed an audience in Philadelphia after receiving the prestigious Liberty Award with a message that rings true today more than ever.
Racism separates, but it never liberates. Hate regenerates fear, and fear once given full hope, binds, consumed, and imprisoned. Nothing is gained from prejudice. No one benefits from racism. I wish I could say that racism and prejudice were only distant memories. I wish I could say that this nation had traveled far along the road to social justice and that liberty and equality were just around the bend. I wish I could say that America has come to appreciate diversity and see and accept similarity.
As I look around, I see a nation not of unity, but a nation of division between Black and white, immigrants and indigenous, rich and poor, educated and illiterate. Even many educated whites and successful Negroes have given up on integration altogether and lost all inequality. But we cannot continue to play ostrich. Democracy cannot flourish amid fear. Liberty cannot bloom amid hate. Justice cannot take root amid rage. America must get to work. In this chill climate in which we live, we must go against prevailing wind. We must dissent from the indifference, must dissent from the apathy, must dissent from the fear, the distrust, and the mistrust. We must dissent from a nation that has buried its head beneath the sand, waiting in vain for its need of its poor, its elderly, and its sick to disappear and throw away. We must dissent from a government that has left its young without jobs, education, and hope. We must dissent from the poverty of vision, edu-- sorry, from poverty of vision and the absence of moral leadership. We must dissent because America can do better and because America has no choice but to do better.
The legal system can force open doors and sometimes even knock down walls, but it cannot build bridges. That job belongs to you and me, Afro and white, rich and poor, educated and illiterate. Our face is bound together. We can run from each other, though we cannot escape each other.
We will only attain freedom if we learn to appreciate what is different and muster the courage to learn what is fundamentally the same. America's diversity offers so much richness and opportunity. Take a chance, won't you? Knock down defenses that divide, tear down the walls in a prison, and reach out. Freedom lies on the other side, and we should have liberty for all.
I want to thank all of our students, our teachers, and administrators who helped coordinate these presentations tonight. As we stated before, we want all of our lifelong learners and leaders to feel prepared, empowered, and to inspire others to lift every voice for the benefits of all. Thank you.
It was fun practicing with them, too.
Yeah, it was.
It was.
Wow. Can we give another round of applause for you? I feel like art has such a conduit to really talk about topics that are often hard, that often we know that young people are ready to talk about. And perhaps I feel like that was, that I got a directive that America has to do better because America has no choice but to do better. So, thank you. Moving to item number four, the minutes, January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, no more meeting minutes. Now, please have a motion.
Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jackwes. Ms. Medina Hernandez. Ms. Ortiz. Mr. Spencer. Noted. Ms. Varela. Mr. Adorno. Ms. Sevilla. Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving to item number five, the superintendent's report, Dr. Aubrey Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening. As of January twenty-twenty-five, we enrolled eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five students. We had five cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our suspensions for January were one hundred and nineteen. Our staff attendance at ninety-three percent, and our student attendance at eighty-nine percent. I just have a few remarks. First, I'd like to just start off with thank you to all the presenters, and I'll just end with a little thing about, a big thing about Black history. But as we celebrate the eighth year of Windows of Understanding, we are honored to be part of this powerful collaboration. Over the years, this initiative has become a beacon of change, leaving a lasting impact on our community and shaping the minds of our students. Art, as you was just saying, is a universal language, has guided us in exploring deep ideas, perspectives, and meaning. Through the nurturing spaces cultivated by Windows of Understanding, we witnessed the transformative power of creative expression, fostering unity, empathy, and a shared commitment to social progress. This initiative not only empowers our students to develop critical consciousness, but also inspires them to take meaningful actions to create a positive impact. It provides a unique framework for personal growth, encouraging them to use their voices and creativity as a catalyst for meaningful change. As we move forward, we remain dedicated to fostering awareness, understanding, and a positive change, one artistic expression at a time. This past week, Blackita Vip Community School, Valenti Community School, held their second annual No One Eats Alone Day, which is a meaningful initiative, where numerous staff and community members join students for lunch. And I was happy to participate and actually sit down and speak to students and, you know, just to hear their perspective and the type of questions they had, and just to see community members come out and spend some time with students. You can just see the impact of their day. They felt important. It was meaningful to them, and I do believe we need to do a lot more of those type of community outreach. So I just want to thank Principal Tredway and her team for, again, putting this initiative together. It's one of my favorites, and I'm looking forward to more initiatives like this throughout the district. On Saturday, February twenty-second, through our continued partnership with the New Jersey Black Women Physician Association in Brunswick Tomorrow and Middlesex County Health Department, we will host another wellness clinic at Red Shore School for flu and COVID vaccines, along with health screenings and other resources will be offered. And for Black History Month, as we honor Black history, we reflect on the profound influences of Black inventors, leaders, and communities in shaping our nation's history, culture, and progress. Through interactive lessons, historical explorations, and creative projects, our schools provide students with meaningful opportunities to engage with the achievements of Black trailblazers across science, arts, civil rights, globally, and beyond. By amplifying these voices and contributions, we empower students to develop a deeper, more inclusive understanding of history, one that forces equity, knowledge, respect, and innovation. Our commitment extends into everyday learning throughout the year. Together, we will inspire future generations to build on this legacy, creating a more just and enlightened world. And I just want to end, not too long ago, you know, I had a dream, I took a nap, and it was one of the strangest dreams I've ever had. It was one where there were no Black inventions. It didn't exist. It started like any other day. I woke up for work and reached for the light switch, but nothing happened. Lewis Latimer, who improved the light bulb with a long-lasting filament, was nowhere to be found. I went to grab my sweater from the washing machine, but it was still wet. George Sampson, who invented an automatic clothes dryer, hadn't been around to make my life easier. No problem, I thought. I'll just grab something for my clothes dresser, but it didn't open because John Jordan never designed the modern dresser. It looked like I had to wear a jacket that day. Annoyed, I decided to style my fade cut with a hairbrush. Thankfully, I had one, but wait. Lyda Johnson, who designed a modern hairbrush with synthetic bristles, was missing. As you can see, my morning was quickly turned into disaster. As I stepped outside, ready to shake off my bad luck, I realized I couldn't lock my house. Washington Augustus Martin's improved lock system didn't exist, and Mary Van Bergen-Brown's home security system wasn't there to protect my place. At this point, I just got in my car, hoping the worst was over. That hope faded fast. I turned on my favorite R and B music, but heard nothing but static. Not to mention, I almost got into a car crash. Garrett Morgan's traffic light was gone, leaving cars to fight for the space at every intersection. That drive was pure chaos, but somehow I made it to work in one piece. But when I entered the building and pressed the elevator button, it wouldn't open. Of course, Alexander Miles hadn't improved automatic elevator doors, but I had no choice but to take the stairs. Out of breath, I finally sat at my desk and turned on my computer, but something was off. The screen had no colors, just dull amber color and green. Mark Dean, who helped develop the color PC monitor, was missing from history, and my graphs were impossible to interpret. At this point, I needed a break. I went to use the restroom, but of course, Thomas Elkins, who contributed to modern toilet improvements, wasn't there to save me. Frustrated and hungry, I decided to grab a snack. I reached for something in the fridge, except there was no fridge. Frederick McKinley Jones and John Standard, who pioneered refrigeration, never made their mark. Fine, I thought. I'll settle for my favorite snack, bananas and peanut butter. But wait, no George Washington Carver, no peanut butter. This dream was officially a nightmare. But just when I thought it couldn't get worse, I panicked. I had left my house unlocked. I reached for my cellphone to call a locksmith, but it wouldn't turn on. Henry Sampson, who helped develop cellular technology, was missing too. And guess what? Who can live without their cellphones? So I immediately woke up, and there, my heart was racing, and I was grateful for every single invention I had taken for granted. This dream made one thing clear: Black inventors have shaped every moment of our daily lives, from the lights we turn on to the technology we rely on. Without their brilliance, the world as we know it wouldn't exist, and that's a fact. That concludes my remark, and that was also with some inputs, check GPT-inspired. That concludes my remarks.
Think art is... Is that your first product piece?
No, not the rest.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Moving to item number six, the student representative report.
We just need a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion for, for the superintendent's report?
Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jackwes. Ms. Medina Hernandez. Ms. Ortiz. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Mr. Adorno. Ms. Sevilla. Motion approved.
Now, moving to item number six, the student representative report, Ms. Emily Cruz Mimi H.
Good evening. In New Brunswick High School, the student council organized a Valentine Gramsout and sold around six hundred roses. They delivered them on February fourteenth, giving everyone the opportunity to spread love. A meeting was held for seniors to discuss prom and the necessary requirements. In New Brunswick High School Science Technology High School, our second semester, eleventh and twelfth grade career shadowing and senior internship students attended their orientation at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. Fourteen seniors who started their middlesex college computer applications class through the high school's college program. We had twenty-eight students visit the RWJ Medical School on February eighteenth for their health career collaborative kickoff event. On February twenty-eighth and twenty-sixth, our ninth and tenth grade students attended their monthly Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital presentation. HST welcomed Rutgers students from the physics department on February twenty-sixth and twenty-seven to guide our physics students through a demonstration. Our sophomore students received a presentation from four Rutgers undergraduate students who came in to speak about an environmental club they led on New Brunswick's campus. In PTEC, CGI staffs visited PTEC on February eleventh to introduce their challenge project to all tenth graders. This year, students will design and pitch a mobile app that helps communities reduce their corporate footprint by promoting eco-friendly habits and tracking collective environmental impact. Students will make their pitches to CGI's exclusives in early June. PTEC continues its rollout to restorative justice practices. February marks the fourth month of the Restorative Justice Book Club for staff and all students, and all students in grade nine eleven have started participating in restorative circles. The PTEC lottery will be held live online on Friday, February twenty-eighth, at one thirty PM. We are so excited to find out which forty young people will be joining us next year as our seventh cohort of PTEC students. This concludes the student representative report.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Moving to item number seven, the facilities committee report, Ms. Jacenia Medina Hernandez.
Good evening, everybody. The facilities committee meeting was held on February twelfth at five PM. We discussed the progress on our building-wide HVAC replacement project at the Pathways Campus. This project-- This project remains on track to be started at the end of the school year and should be completed during the summer. Additionally discussed moving forward with the initial site work at the fields behind our high school. This concludes my report.
Thank you. The athletic, uh, move into item number eight, the athletic committee report, Ms. Ashley Caldwell.
Good evening. The winter season is coming to a close with wrestling still going on this weekend. The boys will wrestle Saturday at St. Joseph High School for the district tournament and next weekend at Franklin High School. The zebras hope to return to the individual state tournament for the eighth year in a row in Atlantic City on March 6th. Earlier this month, the girls had four wrestlers placed in the top six for the county tournament. Amrani Marin-Flores, Lipni Guion, Luisa Espina, and with a second place finish, Zerikaia Polar. James Gonzalez also placed fifth for the boys tournament. The all-division teams for basketball were selected and Christopher Moranta and Kennedy Johnson were selected for the boys and girls basketball teams. The girls finished with their best season since 2018 with a record of 12 to 12. Next week, spring sports registration for the high school and middle school will open. Sports include track and field, baseball, softball, boys volleyball, and tennis at both the middle school and high school levels. Golf, esports, and girls' flag football will also be available at the high school. The middle school will have their winter sports banquet after school tomorrow, and the high school will have theirs on March 5th. May I have a motion to approve the banquet reconciliation report, please?
Ms. Caldwell? Ms. Jackwes? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? Ms. Ortiz? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno? Ms. Sevilla? Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving to item number nine, the curriculum and policy committee report, Ms. Diana Jackwes.
Thank you, Madam President. The curriculum and policy committee met last week. We did have presentations from the principals of the following schools addressing the corrective action plan on chronic absenteeism. PTEC, Woodrow Wilson, Ward Sterling, Lincoln School, McKinley Kindergarten Center, New Brunswick High School, McKinley Community School. We're looking forward to hearing the great and innovative ideas the group of school principals that presents to us next month. Please be innovative. All resolutions were reviewed and recommended for approval. All resolutions are in the consent agenda. We covered the following policies. Policy 5512, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which is a mandated policy. Policy guide 5512 has been revised to add information from the MOU between Education and Law Enforcement Officials, Section 4.4.5, titled Coordination of HIV and Criminal Investigations to Include Parental Notification Requirements and Procedural Guidance on When a School District Must Stay/Pause and HIV investigations will allow law enforcement to conclude their investigation. Policy 7441, Electronic Surveillance in School Buildings and on School Grounds, which is also a mandated policy. The policy was revised, the regulation is new. The Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials, Section 7.4.1, added clarifying information to the language of the statute, and the following statement has been revised to add language to the MOU and policy and regulation guides 7441. Quote, "In accordance with the provisions of NJSA 18A:41-9, if at least one school building of the school district is equipped with video surveillance equipment that is capable of streaming live video wirelessly to a remote location, the Board of Education shall enter into an MOU with local law enforcement authorities, providing the authorities with the capacity to activate the equipment and view live streaming video during an emergency situation." The regulation has been added to provide the guidelines to the existing district policy. And lastly, Regulation 9150, School Visitors, is new, and the regulation has been added to provide the guidelines to the existing district policy. That, Madam President, concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving to item number 10, the student support services committee, Mr. Ivan Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. The student support service committee met on February 3rd, 2025, and we are excited to report on the following. Our most recent special education parent group meeting took place on January 30th with a focus on self-regulation and coping techniques. The SSS team had the opportunity to share practical strategies for managing emotions, improving focus, and promoting resilience, tools that families can incorporate into daily routines to enhance their child's well-being and success both at home and at school. Our next meeting will be held on February 20th at 5:30 PM at All Rivers and School. Our third financial aid night went very well as well as we continue to offer important information and resources to parents, guardians, and high school students about available financial aid options for post-secondary education and training. We also provide insights into the financial aid process, helping families navigate and helping families navigate this important step. Additionally, as National Human Trafficking Month comes to a close, or came to a close at the end of January, it is crucial to remember that the fight against human trafficking does not end with a month. Awareness and vigilance must continue year-round. Parents in particular play a crucial role in keeping their children safe by staying informed about signs of trafficking, having open conversation, and monitoring their children's online activity. The impact of human trafficking is far-reaching, affecting individuals and communities everywhere, and we must stay alert to protect those most vulnerable. Finally, February 5th through 9th marked National School Council meeting. We want to take a moment to celebrate and recognize our school counselors' dedication to creating a positive impact on students' lives. Counselors play an essential role in nurturing students' academic, emotional, and social growth. They provide invaluable support by addressing mental health, guiding career development, and ensuring that students feel safe and empowered to succeed. To all New Brunswick Public School counselors, thank you, you are appreciated. This concludes my SSS committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Adorno. Moving to item number 11, public comments. Ms. Yelena, do we have anyone to sign up?
Yes, Madam President. First up, we have Ms. Linda Stork.
Good evening.
Doesn't look like Ms. Stork is present this evening. Next up, we have Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Let me excuse, I didn't know the proper procedure, so I didn't end up reaching, um, reaching out through email asking if I could speak to him, is it still possible?
We'll have someone come to you and we'll get your information, okay?
I appreciate it.
Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Good evening, members of the board. Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. My colleague is recording tonight's meeting, and I want everybody to know we'll share the recording with the public on the New Brunswick Today YouTube channel later tonight. I'll start by apologizing, I'm sorry I was late today, and I also, I neglected to reach out to you all. I told you I was gonna reach out and have some offline conversations, so I have yet to do that. But rest assured, I will be contacting each of you soon. And forgive me if I missed it, but I did ask at the last meeting about the two new members, so could you tell me whether or not they will stand for election this April?
Yes, it will.
Okay. And how about the financial situation that I asked about last time? Are there any updates on the budget cuts that we can expect to see this year? I know you're still waiting on the state, but is there any more you can share since last month?
Not at this time.
Okay. How about the safety situation in the schools? My sources tell me there have been a lot of fights at New Brunswick High School, New Brunswick Middle School, and the warehouse building. Again, forgive me if I missed it tonight, I walked in on the superintendent's reports, I was possible this was already addressed, but what can you say about the violence and what you're doing about it?
One clarification, it's called Pathway Middle School. Okay, so moving forward, I think we can agree that we're gonna call New Brunswick Pathway Middle School. And as far as the safety, we don't really have a comment about that right now. But I can assure you that our kids, when they come in, they are in a safe building. That whole narrative that schools in New Brunswick aren't unsafe has been since we were in high school, and I think that we can attest to that.
Last point, I think that you should repeal the advanced signup requirement. Obviously, you know, tonight there's a gentleman who wants to speak to you and was unaware of your policy, so I really hope that you don't suppress his right to speak to you tonight. Will you give him the floor and let him have three minutes, just like I got?
The policies to speak on, they are online. We'll speak to the gentleman about how that would happen. It is my understanding it may be a personal issue, and those are handled very differently. But we'll talk to the gentleman, okay?
Sure, sure. I mean, I don't know how you know what he wants to say, but I think that everyone has a right to say what they want for three minutes relative to the board here, and your policies make it harder. You introduce obstacles, and so I'm asking you, please repeal the advanced signup requirement, allow people to participate remotely in these meetings, and while you're at it, start reporting and broadcasting the meetings like so many other boards of education do. There's no reason New Brunswick should be less accessible, less transparent, and less exclusive to other districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everyone, Madam President.
We will speak to the gentleman about coming to speak to the next meeting. Moving to item number 12, the president's report. I just want to continue the celebration and the discussion that we had today about Black History Month. I felt like sitting in the audience and listening to our young people about their contributions, not only in the arts, science, sports, medicine, technology, and engineering, but really their sense of social justice and how we move around some of the topics. And really, even in the context of dissentment, right? I felt really empowered, and I've been sort of thinking about that and even the impact on education. And it really brought me back to last year, we were in the national conference, and we heard from Ruth Brakes, who was the first black child to integrate in all white public elementary school in Louisiana. And sort of listening, right? It almost sounds like people were like, when did this happen? And really just hearing that she had just turned 70 years old, right? And really how America, we really need to do better and how we really talk about race and we really talk about the equality and the equity that comes to all the different populations. And in doing some research, I came about the name of Nanny Helen Burrows. Rutgers is really right now doing research about some of her work that really has gone unnoticed. We're talking about the early 1900s, around 1909, establishing her own school in Washington DC and really helped to navigate some of the conversations that led to really helping other black women at the time find career pathways for black women. She founded a labor organization to improve pay and working conditions for black women and fought for women's voting rights, right? Something that we're still kind of struggling, how that looks all across America, so. And I think that in continuing to talk about community and building communities across and locally, right? I just kind of want to bring it back to this idea of taking care of each other and how we continue to do that, so that when we talk about some of these hard topics, right? At the core, we continue to, we welcoming and continue to build community. So just wanted to kind of give the platform to Black History Month, so, thank you. Moving to item number 13, the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion for resolutions A to AF?
Ms. Caldwell? Ms. Jackwes? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? Ms. Ortiz? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno? Ms. Sevilla? Motion approved.
Moving to item number 14, the finance committee report, Ms. Patricia Padera.
Good evening, everyone. The facilities committee met and reviewed the finance committee report. Can I please have a motion to approve the finance report?
Ms. Caldwell? Ms. Jackwes? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? 22 and 23 noted. Ms. Ortiz? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno? 5, 17, and 18 noted. Ms. Sevilla? 23 noted. Motion approved.
Moving to item 15, the resolution for closed session, whereas the open public meeting at New Jersey SA 10-4-6 provides certain matters that the public body may be discussing closed session. And whereas, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. One, personnel matters, or two, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now therefore being resolved, that the efforts set subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. Can I please have a motion for closed session?
Ms. Caldwell? Ms. Jackwes? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? Ms. Ortiz? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mr. Adorno? Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Thank you, we'll be right back.